Good evening and welcome to the July 8th Special Meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sananian.
Here.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Frank Quintero.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Dear Mayor, Council, Staff, Friends and Fellow Residents and Leaders of our jewel city, tonight we have a special council meeting for which we now pray and ask for guidance and wisdom as we will swear in a new member of this council to sit alongside you and join you in making the decisions that guide our city. The great American leader and First Lady during some of our nation's darkest hours, Mrs. Eleanor Roosevelt, said that "The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams." Tonight, as we swear in Councilmember-elect Divine and wish farewell from this dais, Councilmember Quintero, we pray for the strength and the courage to believe in our dreams and that our dreams take us to those places that allow our community to grow and prosper as one. We pray for everyone who took part in these last elections in June, who took time from their families and their day-to-day lives to discuss and debate the issues of concern to our residents and stakeholders. Through this exercise of democracy, we renewed our commitment to the ideals and principles upon which our nation's foundation was set. Tonight, we must also pray and give thanks to all those who came before this council and the work that they put forth into making our city what it is today. May we always live up to the best aspects of our nature and never stop dreaming. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the July 8th, 2014 Special Meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, July 3rd, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Mayor's Welcome. So, once again, I want to welcome everyone to the special meeting. You all remember that in 2013, then-councilmember Rafi Manukien was elected to the office of Treasurer of the City of Glendale. As a result, his term was left unfinished, and this council exercised prerogative under the terms of the Charter and appointed Frank Quintero, a veteran councilmember, to the council for the duration of a little over a year until the next county elections, which happened to be in June of 2014. Well, we've had those elections, and the people of Glendale have spoken, and we have a new councilmember who will be sworn in today. So, thank you all for coming, whether you're here to say goodbye to Councilman Quintero or to say hello and welcome to Councilmember Divine. We're happy that you're here. And with that, I'd like to continue on to the next thing. Mr. Clerk?
Next item under New Business. At 3:00 A. is the City Clerk regarding report on canvas of the vote of the special election consolidated with the County of Los Angeles statewide primary election held on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014. 3A1 is a resolution reciting the fact of the special municipal election held on June 3rd, 2014, declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law. Mr. Mayor and Council, you were all provided with a report that reports and recites the results as canvassed by the County of Los Angeles. This was a unique election because we had consolidated with the county, as you stated. Some results are still up in the air in the state. Those reading the news will note that the State Controller's Office, there is a recount in that election, but our results fortunately, almost a month, I would say, after the election, have been finally canvassed, and we are happy to present those results to you. As stated in the report, the prevailing candidate in this field was Mrs. Paula Divine. She is a councilmember-elect. There was total ballots voted of 21,689. 12,282 ballots were cast by vote-by-mail voters, and 9,406 voters voted at the polls on Election Day. With that, I would like to present these results to you for your adoption and approval of this item.
Yes, Mr. Quintero?
Well, I absolutely accept the results. And it would be my honor and pleasure to move 3A1.
Second. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sananian.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is comments by outgoing Councilmember Frank Quintero.
Before, Mr. Quintero, I apologize, before you make your comments, I would like to make some comments because last year, all the presiding councilmembers, other than me, had the opportunity to make some comments. When you retired, that's right, for the first time.
My last farewell.
I didn't get the chance to do it, and I promise to keep it short. I think you know how I feel about you as a councilmember and you as a person. It's a great loss for Glendale indeed, but life goes on. You have to lead your life the way you need to lead your life. You've provided a huge service to the people of Glendale, for which they love you, and they've elected you back twice after initially electing you. Yes, so elected you back twice, and you got appointed once by your fellow councilmembers. I have felt your support and your advice for the last 15 months. You've been a mentor, a friend, and a leader for me personally, and I intend for that to be the case even after you resign. I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to rely on you a lot. So, once again, loss for Glendale, but nevertheless, I think you will be in Glendale, you will be involved, because the way you are, there's no way you're going to detach yourself from the city, because you love the city. And with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, as the mayor mentioned, I did say goodbye 14 months ago, and anyway, I thought I was coming back for a three- or four-month assignment, but because of the cost of the election, the city council decided to roll it into the county election, so I wound up serving much longer than I anticipated. But I do appreciate the city council's confidence in me. I think it was just the fact that we'd been together for so long, for good or bad, that they assumed that serving a little bit longer was a better plan than bringing in someone that didn't have the experience. But I have served with Mr. Weaver and Mr. Najarian for many terms, and with Ms. Friedman for many terms, and I look forward to, and I was very happy to serve with Mr. Sananian. I think we've been a good team, and he's done an excellent job. So, let me start by thanking the staff that you see here on a weekly basis. These are some of the managers and directors of the different divisions of the city that have been here for many years and have done, in my opinion, an excellent job of steering this city in the right direction. It's always twofold, the elected officials that perhaps set the vision, but it's up for the professionals in the field to go ahead and execute the vision of the city council and the strategic planning that the city council does. And in the city of Glendale, without question, we have some of the finest professionals. I travel up and down the states and have been involved for many years, and there's no doubt that we have some of the best professionals in California working for us here in the city of Glendale. And then I also want to thank the rank-and-file. Those are the cops out on the street and the detectives and the firefighters that are up at 4:00 in the morning, going after, picking people up in apartments or houses and transporting them to Glendale Memorial, and the people that work for Glendale Water and Power that climb the poles, all the different things they do, many of them quite hazardous, the Public Works Department, the Parks Department, library, the planning staff. Even at that basic, blue-collar level, we have excellent employees. It's been the case for many years, and it continues. And then finally, I want to thank City Manager Scott Ochoa, a fairly, not so fairly new addition, but a more recent addition to the city family, and the longtime Assistant City Manager Jasmine Beers. And then finally, I want to thank my wife, Janie, and my son Frankie. Stand up for a minute. They have been... They've been my strongest supporters, and obviously, we're very happy that this is over. But they did support me the entire way. They've been always ready to listen and offer advice, et cetera, et cetera. So, approximately 13 years ago, after participating in Glendale Civic Life, really, I began in 1977, '78. It's when I opened an office in this city and joined the Chamber of Commerce and got involved in many things here at the city. I agreed I would run for city council, and I knew it was going to take a lot of time, a lot of effort, but I loved the city and felt that I could contribute something to the city. And I think I've had, I've seen a lot of positive changes throughout the years, and even more changes that'll be taking place. But I think what stands out, I think about all the positive things that have happened during my time in the city, what really stands out is what this city has weathered, and that's basically the greatest economic recession since the Great Depression. I mean, we know what this country has gone through and other countries around the world, and yet, we have managed to weather the storm because of the staff we have, because of the city council that we have, and I think the worst of it, the worst of the storm, I think it's over. And by the way, that storm wasn't just an economic storm, there was also a political storm, where basically, the state of California took millions of dollars from municipalities, and we being the, one of the more thrifty cities, one of the more better-run cities, maybe we took an even bigger hit than others did. But the bottom line is, we're still here through one of the worst recessions, and I do remember an incident where one of the gadflies, it was early Monday morning, and we were working on the budget, and he was going on and on, gloom and doom, and I just couldn't help myself. I said, "You know what? The sun is going to rise tomorrow." And the sun did rise that next day, and we're still here, and I think we're doing quite well. We're still looking at efficiencies in our delivery of city services, but I think the quality of life has not deteriorated, and it's going to continue to be among the best in Southern California. So, as the mayor said, I do plan to continue to participate in Glendale Civic Life, not as an elected official, but there are many organizations that I've worked with throughout the years, and so I'm going to continue to be involved. Veterans issues have always been one of my life's work, and unfortunately, they're back again, so there's plenty to do in terms of the returning vets and some of the older vets, like myself and Mr. Weaver, I might add. I've been appointed to a state California commission that deals with workforce and training issues, so I'm going to continue to do that, and I hope to continue to serve at the airport, working with the Burbank City Council and Burbank residents to bring a new 14-gate safe terminal to the region. So, I want to congratulate both Divines, Mr. and Mrs., but specifically, specifically Mrs. Divine. We've worked together for many years, she's been a friend for many years, and there is no doubt that she's going to do a wonderful job. She has an excellent background, lots of expertise in civic affairs, and she undoubtedly has the best interest of the city. So, thank you to all of the residents, all of the people that supported me throughout the campaigns, and thank you to some of the people that I've irritated, and I've always taken it with a smile, I've always had a thin, excuse me, a thick skin, I think, and people are entitled to their opinions, and that's how I've always felt. When someone has come to the dais, I always respect what they have to say. So, thank you very much. It's been a wonderful opportunity, and I'm very, very happy that I had the opportunity to serve you.
Yes.
What people don't realize, back in the turn of 1990, '91 or something, when I was working with the Corps, he would call me from his office, "Hey, man, what's happening?" Now, that routine continued a number of years, and I kept encouraging him to move from Santa Monica to Glendale, because his business is here. He finally did, and got a condo. Janie remembers, we were invited down to the condo, had dinner and stuff, and then a while later, he calls me and says, "We bought a home up on the hill. Come on up and see it." And he was working on it, and he said, "We'd be the first ones to see it when it was done." I guess it's not done yet, because we still haven't been invited. But that can be taken two different ways, for sure. I mean, we've had our differences, but you know, that's a free country, and everybody has their own opinions on issues, whatever. Enjoyed working with Frank. Think it's going to be more enjoyable to work with Paula, though. At least initially, until I find out what she's made of. Don't worry, her husband's a civil engineer like me. We're going to get along fine. I just don't want to see you standing up here as a new gadfly.
No, it won't happen.
Because we, the two of us teamed up quite a bit on some of the gadflies and took on the task more than once, right? That was fun. So, go enjoy your retirement, and I know you'll be around a lot, Veterans Affairs, and whatever.
And I promise you in front of all these people that we're going to have lunch at my house. Soon as it's done.
Wait till I show that tape to my wife.
As soon as it's done, right.
On with the show.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Quintero. What's next?
Item 5 is the City Clerk Oath of Office to Councilmember-elect Paula Divine. This time, I would like to ask Mrs. Paula Divine to approach the podium. First of all, heartfelt congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Divine, as a token of our congratulations from our office, I'd like to present you with this copy of the Constitution of the United States of America. You will notice as you're taking the oath, the first and most important document that you will take in oath and swear to protect is this document right here. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Repeat after me. "I..." Raise your right hand.
Oh.
That way, it's official.
You didn't tell me. You didn't say "I."
"I" state your name.
Paula Divine.
"Do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support and defend..."
"...that I will support and defend..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...against all enemies foreign and domestic..."
"...against all enemies foreign and domestic..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance..."
"...and allegiance..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...that I take this obligation freely..."
"...without any mental reservation..."
"...without any mental reservation..."
"...or purpose of evasion..."
"...or purpose of evasion..."
"...and that I will well..."
"...and that I will well..."
"...and faithfully..."
"...and faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties..."
"...discharge the duties..."
"...upon which I am about to enter..."
"...which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ready? Everything okay? Seat feel good?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by Councilmember Paula Divine.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Okay, take your time.
My seat went down too far.
It's okay.
Usually, I do this very well.
What's wrong?
Oh, it's a mechanical...
Do you want to seat down?
Yes. Is that there? Oh, get up.
Frank's going away present.
Yeah.
Better? You can have it any heart you want.
Okay.
Just a little glitch.
It's all good. It's all you know.
Thank you all. What an honor it is for me to be seated here with my four colleagues, whom I admire and respect for the years of service they have given to this community. I am looking forward to working with all of you to reach the common goal of maintaining Glendale as a vibrant, viable, and progressive city. Councilman Quintero, it will be very difficult to fill your shoes. I can only hope to come close. Thank you for your support and your guidance during this campaign, and more importantly, thank you for the many years of dedicated service to our city. I wish Janie and you the best of health and happiness in your new adventures. I owe much gratitude and a big thank you to many. I must start with the 6,614, or make that 6,613, people who made this occasion possible by casting their one precious vote for me. I am on this dais because of every one of you. I recognize that Glendale is a very diverse community, and when only one vote was possible, I know it was a very challenging decision for many of you. Believe me, I appreciate it. I pledge that I will be the voice of the entire city, from the far north to the south and from east to west. My next big thank you goes to my core committee, who designed and implemented an outstanding campaign. Elaine Wilkerson was the driving force and heart behind the endeavor. Her leadership and organizational skills were key to getting the job done. Todd Blair and Garrett Biggs were the consultants who obviously know the how to design a campaign. Dawn Zachary, Arlene Vador, Larry Miller, Amanda Faisal, Annette Kosker, Rema Sahakian, and Ava Merzakian were integral members of the team, each giving me expertise, advice, and encouragement. I also must recognize and thank Dan Cabrera and Liz Merzakian for their fine work on my behalf. And let me not forget the hundreds of volunteers who hosted, who donated, who endorsed, who walked, who phoned, and who delivered signs. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I could never have accomplished this without all of you. Last but not least, I want to thank my husband, Art. He was always there for me, providing support and encouragement during the ups and downs of my campaign. And finally, to my fellow candidates, I say thank you for running a respectful campaign many people noticed and appreciated, including me. I'd like to take this opportunity just to introduce and thank some good friends who've traveled to Glendale on my behalf to celebrate with me, Judge Ken and Linda Burr from San Francisco, Pat Corcoran, Larry Yee and Ron and Kathy Naichem. Thank you for being here. In the short eight months of my term, I will begin addressing the issues that are my priorities. Pedestrian and cycling safety must be a major focus. I want to see progress in our education and engineering efforts to ensure the safety of our residents on our streets. Glendale is becoming a multimodal city for cars, buses, bikes, pedestrians, but I want it to be a safe multimodal city. Chief Castro has taken the lead and is making excellent progress in addressing this very serious issue. In addition, I will ask the supportive council in instructing staff to bring recommendations for increasing the number of well-lighted and well-marked crosswalks and making other structural changes that will increase safety. No one should be injured or die in Glendale because someone makes a mistake. We need to begin addressing traffic congestion. With the concurrence of my colleagues, I will ask staff bring a report to council within four months that provides options and recommendations for the design and possible implementation of one-way streets and signal synchronization to mitigate traffic congestion in the downtown areas. In regard to responsible development, I am pleased that Councilman Najarian has requested that the downtown-specific plan be brought back for review. I will ask council to request the mobility study be reviewed as well. These documents need to be revisited. The zoning and other concessions need to be reevaluated in light of the volume of building that has taken place during the past few years. Finally, we must begin to address long-term pension reform. I commend the city council, management, and our employees for making much progress over the past years in mitigating the pension burden, but further progress can be made if we examine the city's overall pension system on an ongoing basis rather than simply asking for concessions from our employees once a year at budget time or periodically at contract negotiation time. With this in mind, I will ask the council to put a discussion of pension reform on the agenda as soon as possible. I propose that we form a task force consisting of outside pension experts and representatives of the community, city management, and the city unions. This group would be tasked with bringing a report back to city council within six months that provides options and recommendations for long-term pension reform in our city. The council discussion would include addressing the purpose, the scope, the goals, and the logistics of forming this task force. The objective of this process would be to consider ways to reduce the city's overall pension burden while being fair to all employees, assuring that Glendale remains competitive in the job market and continues to deliver the outstanding services that our exceptional employees now provide. Obviously, this is a lot to do in eight months, but I am up to the challenge. With council working together, Glendale residents will see progress toward a safer, more beautiful, and sustainable city. I look forward to working for and serving each and every one of our Glendale residents. Alone, we can do little; together, we can do much. Again, thank you for making your votes divine. Thank you.
Councilmember Friedman?
Well, I'm thrilled to welcome my good friend Paula Divine to this dais. I was one of the many people who urged her to run in this race, and I'm so glad that she decided to take the plunge. Running a campaign is very difficult, it's a lot of work, it's emotionally draining, it's intellectually draining, and Paula met all of those challenges divinely. She was such a hard worker, she listened to people, she came up with solid ideas, and I believe that's what resonated with the voters, and it truly resonated, and the results of the election were, really sent a strong message. I know that she'll be a pleasure to work with. She's demonstrated her service to this community for so many years. Her and her husband both are very well-known, they're at every event, anytime there's a nonprofit that needs to raise money, they're there to help. And I'll tell you, I'll just give you a little story of the type of person that Paula is. At one point during her campaign, I called her up and I said, "There's an event in Montrose today. Let's go up there, and I'll introduce you to whoever you don't know, and we'll do a little campaigning." She said, "Great." We jump in the car and we go up, and I say, "All right, well, we should go and meet this person and that person, let me take you there." And she said, "Oh, no, I have to run into these stores to try to get some donations for Glendale Healthy Kids." So, instead of taking advantage of the time to help her own campaign, she used the time to raise money for one of her... to raise money for one of her favorite nonprofits. And I know that those businesses couldn't say no, because that's the kind of energy that she has and the kind of personality she has, is that she's a leader, and she gets people behind her. I'm looking forward to her being a leader to me, I'm looking forward to working with her. I already know we're not going to agree on everything, I'll do my best to convince her to do what's right, or at least what I think is right, but I know that every decision that she makes, she'll do because she believes deep in her heart that it's the right thing to do, that it's the right thing for the people of Glendale, for all the people of Glendale, and I also know from working with her and her husband that every report by the staff will be analyzed, that when she has questions, she'll sit down with staff, she'll do her homework, and she'll make well-reasoned decisions. And she will also represent our city very, very well. I'll be proud to have her as a figurehead of the city, be proud to work with her up on this dais, and I'm really looking forward to not just the next 10 months, but hopefully the next 10 months plus four years. So congratulations again, Paula.
Well, congratulations, Paula. I know that you've got what it takes to handle what we do up here. You've been around quite a...
Careful.
You've been around the community in all areas, and it will be fun, it'll be hard, you'll laugh, you'll cry, you'll pound your fists, you'll jump for joy, but in the end, as long as we're all working towards making Glendale better, that's what counts. So congratulations, and I can't wait to start working with you.
Paula, by my calculations, women now represent 40% of the city council of the city. Men are going downhill.
No, women are going up.
Yeah, well, who knows? I started out with two ladies on the council in 97, and it was good. I miss Ginger, and I miss Celine. Now I've got you, so you have a lot to learn. If you think you're entering this job knowing it all, you don't. You're going to get a huge education from staff, they're all available to you whenever you want. So I don't know how many more days of vacation you're going to take before you come in here and let Mr. Ochoa start educating you, but you can do it. It just seems hard sometimes, because Normity and, as I told Art, I don't know if I told it to you, you will not be a successful councilwoman until you make some enemies, because you're going to end up offending some people by what you say and the positions you take. You can't please everybody all the time, so you'll have to bear with that. I'm sure you're strong enough, you've been in a lot of positions like that before, but that's the reality of what we do here. So looking forward to spending at least eight months with you.
Thank you.
I think the first time I got to know you was during the CDBG days, when you were trying so hard and so successfully on behalf of the Camp Rosie, and now you're a council member, and I think you're going to do just as good a job here as you did with the Commission on the Status of Women. Because, you know, I don't have the kind of wisdom and years of experience as my colleagues do, but I will say this, that no matter whether you agree with the other council members or not, whether your votes coincide or not, so long as you're making those decisions where you believe they're for the best interests of the residents of the city of Glendale, that's the right, it's the right decision. So Godspeed, good luck, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Arti.
Mr. Mayor and council, there's no other items. It's just motions to adjourn.
So moot.
Second.
Yes, Paula Devine seconded it, so we're adjourned at 6:37 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.